This time I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Preston County Commission. Today is March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the record show, that all three commissioners are present, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Stone. This time, uh, do we have anyone from the public to be recognized as not on the agenda?
Yes, we have our delegation from Preston County.
All right, go ahead and take care of that.
Sure, um, just to let people know that, uh, we signed, we had the ARPA agreement signed for the Mill Street Bridge project earlier this morning. And so everything is good to go on that, and they are here, so if we want to present our certificate. Grab a picture.
One more.
One more round on three, ready, one, two, three. Okay.
Thank you, Ben, for your team. You're welcome.
Thank you guys. I think it's good to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming over this morning.
Thank you so much.
All right, did you have anything from our Senator's office? I don't see anyone, and I didn't see anything. All right, no tax corrections, no apportements, and we will then move forward with our ten oh one.
Review the bills.
We can go ahead and do that.
Okay, I'm going to approve the bills that have been properly presented and approved. And reviewed.
I'll say that.
But properly moved and seconded to approve the bills, they have been properly presented and approved. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. All right, ten oh one, uh, we have approval of the tentative two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Can I just say one? I'll be a hundred percent honest with you, um, I am still not in support of the contribution to the EDA, but if that's how you guys want to be informed, that's what we're doing.
Okay. It was a, it was a difficult budget to work through. There's a lot of unknowns. Um, as far as, you know, the potential of a new judge and, uh, people moving around and, just a lot happening in our county government, so.
Yeah, but I'm really proud of what we did with all the elected officials and working with you guys. And Joe, seriously, um, with this being your first budget, you pulled through, um, we got a little bit of help from Kathy, but I think we did a really good job.
It's my understanding that this wasn't an average year, so.
Does any other elected officials here have any question?
I mean, they can, they have some.
They can, they can, but it doesn't matter at this point.
I, I know, I'm just asking.
Yes.
I don't think we have anyone else here, except Jay.
Jay's a.
Oh, yes, and Lisa.
Yeah, Jay and Lisa.
And Sheriff's Office group. Linda's here, I saw her too, well. Husband was proud of her.
Only so we try to be conservative, because when you have some things that are kind of hanging out there that we're not sure about yet, so you just want to be safe and on the safe side. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this tentative budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I would like to second that motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded to, uh, statistically approve the twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, budget for the Preston County Commission. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you Casey?
Good, how are you?
I'm great. All right, well, I guess these ways, just start a separate.
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe, yeah, we can just keep these in the K this order.
For security. You're a lot of the new set of agreement that are assigned already there. Circuit court. Prosecuting attorney. County assessment. Still like a pain there. There you go. Eight on you. Quite uneven, great. Circuit court.
All right, at this time, apologize for running just a few minutes late to sign all this budget document. Um, we have Casey Sawyer with Community Corrections with the lease agreement. Good morning.
Good morning.
Casey.
I'm here today for a signature and approval of a lease agreement, which will have us be moving from our current location, which is right across from Walhart, to the Kingwood Plaza, starting with July one. Um, we are hoping to be here again before that, just so it doesn't mess up any, uh, rotation with our grant and getting out with our current receipt, rather than so.
I think it's a really, really good move.
Well, get some pleasure to, uh, courthouse, and also it's a, it's a big drop in cost.
Yeah.
Big, big drop. Significant between the rent and the utility cost.
Do we need a motion for the President to sign? Um, do we get, read through that statement? Okay, at this time, I knew that, um, we authorized the President to sign the Community Corrections lease agreement for the office space down at the, um, Kingwood Plaza.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the President to sign the lease agreement, for Community Corrections, uh, with the CGP Development Company.
Thank you.
And, and just.
Beginning of July one, two thousand and.
And just for everybody to know, the County Commission doesn't pay this, but the fiduciary accounting for the Community Corrections, we have to be the one that authorizes and signs the lease. So it's not going out of the county.
Yeah, we give approval.
Yes, we have to do that.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
You took the bull, you took the bull by the horns, and you're doing a good job, Casey.
Take the time.
Joe, who wants to witness this?
Um, that'd be you.
I said we have a couple notarizing around, so.
Linda, is this something I can witness?
Um, I don't know, that, that doesn't say to be notarized. Just as witness.
Saying immediately, anybody.
Um, why don't you give it to somebody other than you, Joe?
Well, I'm not your employee, so maybe it'd be best that somebody else witnesses.
That'd work. I figured between the clerk and the prosecuting attorney, one of you signed it, we'd find.
How you doing, Linda?
I'm doing okay. You know, it's a big day, signing a budget, and I had to be here, so.
That way you can beat me up afterwards?
No.
I'm taking it.
And, um, we're gonna go ahead and make, is there, do we have another copy of this?
I was gonna copy it after. Do you want it copied now or after he signs it down, like Craig Phillips signs it?
I mean, if you get it today, that'd be okay, but if you're not gonna get it today, would you like to take a copy with us?
That's, that's fine, just in case.
Okay.
So you're moving to be moved in. How does your guys' budget run from July first to July first, I can't. Great. Do you have a meeting company?
Yeah, that's taken care of as well. I mean, they're keeping dates open, so just based on when they're done with our office space.
Hey, Joe, why you making that pick, too?
You're gonna be ready, Casey, after jam.
That thing was good. Nineteen, it's not showing anymore. And I didn't see a better one.
They did a, um, they did a great job on the, um, GDA slash foreign language protection slash chamber columners space.
Yeah, they, we went and looked at that, and it's kind of overwhelming after, um, because they gutted the whole office space to fit what we needed, so.
Your current space doesn't really have the functionality either, does it?
There's a lot of wasted space there.
There's wasted space on your roof, yeah.
They said it was a rate load.
All right, thank you, thank you. Next up, we have Jay Shay, our prosecuting attorney, with lease agreements.
Morning, Mr. Shay.
Morning, how are you all?
Doing great.
I went ahead and had, um, Lisa Daly sign this lease, which is ready to go as soon as you all approve it.
Yeah.
Um, this is the one that I had. After our final negotiations, I think I sent it to you a bit before last week.
Yeah, I, um.
What was the product, final price, say whatever?
Nineteen.
Nineteen hundred a month, nineteen hundred a month.
Same, same thing at the same time, I think.
Okay, just, I guess we could clarify for people, but, um, we came to, um, terms with the lease with the, um, Daly Building and Jay, the prosecuting attorney, will be moving to the Daly Building effective July first.
Yeah, well, it'll be the, um, my hope is the first week of July.
The first week of July, yeah.
Because I'm actually gonna, I'm actually, I talked to Casey Sawyer, I'm actually gonna try to use the same.
Try to get her to give you company.
Yes.
Yeah, you told me that.
They had a very reasonable rate, and they can do it in one day.
Okay, do we need, um, approval?
Yes.
At this time, I knew that we would authorize the President to sign the, um, prosecuting, prosecuting attorney's lease agreement with, what is the party?
DeFamco.
DeFamco.
DeFamco LLC.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded, uh, to approve and authorize the President to sign, the lease agreement between DeFamco LLC and the Preston County Commission, um, that the prosecuting attorney's office, uh, effective July one, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, and this is a year-to-year.
It's a four-year term, um, but it's, it is subject to the, you know, if there's budget shortfall.
Well, they say a year-to-year contract, but it's set priced for four years, is that, what's that?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, the only reason that you can back out of the lease is for budget shortfall, yes.
Yes.
Otherwise, it's a four-year price.
I don't think my long, my long-term goal is to keep you there forever, but with the, um, news of an additional judge that will, um, clear space up in the courthouse, and your staff will be together, and then hopefully in the future.
I love, I would love to see you guys be back in the hands once the health department's out of there, because then you have that whole big area up there, you know what I mean?
Can we go and vote, and then you guys can talk over?
Oh, my apologies, I forgot that.
That's all right, and sometimes we slip that part, but we gotta make, we gotta make it official.
Okay, my apologies, yeah.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Me and Dawn get talking.
All right, all right.
No, Dawn doesn't talk that much. That was a rarity.
I engaged the conversation and then gone.
Jay, this is to be stayed on the top of this, correct?
Yes.
And you guys are having fun in the back there.
Uh, you, did you hear anything back here?
No, they should be ready to report if you.
Hey, Lisa.
If you're gonna make copies, then I wouldn't mind having a couple of copies, please.
Um, Jay, can you get him a couple of copies? And thank you, Jay, for all the work you did negotiating that contract.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
And I think the, um, Dailies will be happy to have somebody in that building.
I mean, I haven't been over there in a while, they've already been, they're cleaning up.
And you negotiated that they're gonna repair the parking lot.
Yes, they're going to replace or re-surface the parking lot with wood.
Great, great job.
Matt, clerk, we do need your signature now, at the bottom of that.
Thank you all.
All right, next up, the goal warrants.
Um, at this, at this time, I would like to approve the minutes for February twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, Board of Equalization and Review Extended Session and Emergency Session to keep the tax books open until February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and then March seventh, twenty twenty-three Regular Meeting, and March ninth, twenty twenty-three Special Session.
I will second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve into the minutes, uh, for the dates listed on our agenda as they are correct. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. State settlements?
At this time, I would like to approve the state settlement list for March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three through March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, for Ward Williams Robbins.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the estate settlement list, March thirteenth through March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, for Robbins. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. He has his.
This time I like putting much, especially with the Dailies.
It's been properly moved and seconded to the schedule for the proceedings of vacation into the registered report session for March sixteenth or March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Now, fiduciary report today, it belongs to the art business, as soon as.
What are we on?
Full business.
We're just waiting for you to, um, finish out your printer. Dee Dee, thank you for all your work. I know you've been super, super dizzy lately. Everything keeping you busy with our work sessions. And sometimes they're really hard to, um, track of. Got it, Tim? There you go.
All right, do we have anything under EMS today?
Um, not much, I mean, we had that work session, what was that, Friday? It was Friday.
Okay, Friday.
We had the work session Friday, um, a lot of good information came out of that, I believe, and, um, we have a plan. I believe Justin got that one contract back from Marshall County.
Yes.
Yeah, um, service agreement, and I'm working right now on setting a Roseburg, meeting up with Roseburg EMS to see if their ends are hot, and then we can get it from there.
All right, um, Roseburg Art Funding Request.
Okay, so we got some more information on that, um, description of what they're using the funding for. So they kind of changed it a little bit, because, um, the one festival is out, it's River, River City Festival, Veterans, Commemoration Day, West Virginia Annual Chestnut Festival, the, well, Kris Kendal Mark?
Kris, Kris Kendal Mark.
The European-style Christmas market, and then what I didn't know is they're using part of that funding for the historic Roseburg Schools Lodge Center, so it's not just for their festivals. I've been really thinking about this, and they gave a really good description, but I am kind of gonna get into the weeds about this, because if we give five thousand, or say we give a thousand dollars to this festival, a thousand dollars to that festival, then I would feel obligated that every festival in the county that came and wanted a contribution, that, um, we'd have to give a similar, um, contribution.
Technically, there's no obligation for us to give anything to anybody.
I know there's no obligation, I'm just saying, once you fund one, Dawn.
Let me finish, Hunter.
Okay, sorry.
Please, just let me finish. There is no obligation, let me, like, there is no obligation for us to give anything to anyone. This money is fifty percent that we have to keep from, that we have decided over the years to keep from hotel motel taxes. We have, we are bound by state code to spend it on certain things. And those things are, you know, like Parks and Rec, historical things like this, we've given to like Arthurdale for their different events. Art things, um, that has to be where it is spent, and that's the only way it can be spent. In the, in the past with Roseburg, I'm not trying to defend them or whatever, I'm just making a statement. In the past, because they do, we checked a lot of these blocks with the arts and the history and everything, that is, that is why they've been given money.
A good, a good area, it's, um, appropriate funding.
Right.
And this is a basket in the current budget?
In the current.
Would come from hotel motel?
Correct. I.
They could owe the artist.
Right, come out of ours.
Do you think the five thousand is justified?
The way they have spent it in the past with the different advertising done, and honestly, Hunter, I've, I've been in Oakland, and they've got information up there, trying to get people to come down, so. And at Deep Creek, I've seen their flyers out and about, so it isn't like they're just.
Oh, no, I, I read their description, and they have, um, information flyers in every Wilkins Center on I sixteen and seventy-nine, I seventy-nine. So they're definitely putting a lot of good information out there. And it seems like a thousand would go to the River City Festival, a thousand to the Chestnut Festival, and then the other three thousand would be divided up between this Lodge Center, the Christmas Market, and the, um, Veterans Commemoration Day.
And, and historically, Roseburg has been a very good, they have, not just these four things that they've got on there, they have been very good in the past of having other events. They've worked with, um, well, in case of when they worked with Parks and Rec when they had the bike races down there, and, uh, and also with the, with the tours up to, uh, Cannon Hill and things like that. And I know they worked with Friends of Chief, that's also.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not downplaying them, I, I love what they have going on down there. I've helped at pretty much every one of these festivals except the Christmas Market. I'm just saying, in the future.
You shouldn't edit that, it's actually pretty cool.
Um, in the future, when other festivals come, like, say, up with Tompkins has a new festival, then I'm going to feel, we're gonna have to look at them, too.
We, and we would, that's what we do. We look and see, is it, is it something meets criteria, do we have the money to support it? And then we do.
Okay, any, um, other discussions?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this grant, this, uh, from the hotel motel taxes to Roseburg Revitalization Committee.
Want to second that statement?
Well, if you don't, I will second. It's been properly moved and seconded to, uh, approve the expenditure of the current budget hotel motel tax to the Roseburg Revitalization Committee, um, for the proposed use of tourism, uh, funds in the amount of five thousand dollars. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
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 All right, we will move along. We have, um, ARPA request to alter the scope of work, we have OML Pain Care with the Friends of Chief.
All right, you have.
Great, good morning.
I think we got, um, this from the.
Yes, do you need a, do you run through it, or are you guys?
Yeah, if you wanna run through it, just so the public knows.
Um, sure, we are requesting our award, uh, from the ARPA funding.
Hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Correct, uh, we're worried for the Chief River Rail Trail, uh, for surfacing on the Chief River Rail Trail. We're requesting, uh, some flexibility to use a portion of those funds to complete the Trailhead Project, which is a part of the rail trail project, which does include a portion of surfacing and, access controls of mow yards, collards, gates, uh, holder placement. along with some additional trail, um, connector trail to the pavilion and, and, uh, snack shack with vendor building there, so, uh, the total estimated cost is between forty and forty-five thousand, uh, meeting the contractor tomorrow to develop that scope of work and give them a notice to proceed based on.
Money that way you guys can have your grand opening, I think, the first week of May, or you wanna have it done by the chance for a money that way you guys can have your grand opening, I think, the first week of May, or you wanna have it done by the Chief River Festival?
Correct, yeah, the, the, this project has been completely funded up until this request by, uh, West Virginia DP, Amler Funds and uh, Department of Highway Direct Trails Funds for the, uh, structure materials. Uh, we have exhausted all of our contingency funding funds with those grants and uh, need this last little bit to, uh, again, get prepared for this opening, which we'd like to do before the Chief River Festival. We'd like to open it at the end of April. We will, we have a plant ribbon cutting, which you guys will be invited to attend. Um, and we respectfully request the.
Just one more question. So Friends of Cheat owns Trailhead? Is the rail trail, who owns the actual?
Rail trail's owned by these, uh, what's your state, what was this, West Virginia State Rail Authority or the West Virginia Multimodal Division of Multimodal? Um, so they own that section of.
That won't have any, that won't have any.
Uh, we have a lease agreement, we have a lease agreement with this, with them to manage and, and, and build, construct, uh, for thirty years, um, you know, to be reading, so.
I am, um, definitely fine with it, um, how do we proceed to move?
We're just approving this.
All, all we're, all we're going to do is approve this alteration. We're still, it's still gonna be a hundred and fif, a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. It's now up to the amount needed from this estimate will be allowed to be used for this project change. So I would like to make that motion at this time.
Sounds good. Cal, second that motion. Thank you, Dawn.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the change in the funding, uh.
Motion, thank you, Dawn.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the change in the funding, uh, original funding request, uh, to the ARPA agreeing between the Preston County Commission and Friends of Cheat, um, to reallocate some of that funding to, uh, take care of the Chief River Trailhead Project. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Question, I guess now that we have done that approval, I mean, this work will commence soon, like, you know, as soon, uh, this would be our first, like, invoice or first in request. Um, I guess maybe we'll be with you, Joe, to.
Yes, um, I mean, this afternoon, we will get this worked out. I will get you the amendment for approval and then we can go from there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, before Owen leaves, I have received, um, a message this morning from Amanda Pitser with Friends of Cheat and, um, she was asking, um, if we have made any sort of decision, uh, concerning, I was gonna tell you for a minute.
The Bull Run Road.
The Bull Run Road. ARPA asked that Friends of Cheat came before us and was asking for, uh, more or additional ARPA money for that project. Um, and I, I believe I knew what to respond, but with, I, I didn't speak on behalf of my fellow commissioners.
Well, to, um, I think I've spoke on this before, but I don't think, um, it is the county commission's job or ARPA money's job to fund a, um, DOH road. That's my standpoint on it. Is that your standpoint?
Well, and we have already kind of set the stance that we are not gonna expend any more of the ARPA funding at this time, uh, because we have some of our own internal needs that we have to address that exceeds our budget.
And I mean, we appreciate you guys' um, eagerness to repair that road, but just don't get me wrong, that is a, um, rough, rough road that I remember back when I looked at the scope of the project, it was ditch cleaning and paw foot filling and, um, tree trimming and I just don't see ARPA was meant for long-term effects. And the people carrying down that road, I don't know if that's a long-term solution.
Please let Amanda know that the county commission will continue to push forward to get the DOH to maintain the two things that they're supposed to do to that road, but at this time, I don't think we.
My hesitation with it was this, there's, we've given out an enormous amount of this money. We do have needs that have to be taken care of with county facilities. That is where we have to look at that priority at this time. We, you know, really have been very diligent about getting that money out there, but at this time, that's what we have to focus that need. So, and with prices being so astronomical and everything lately, it's, we don't wanna.
Yeah, we will, um,
Sure, understood.
Continue to push the DOH and appreciate your request.
It would, it would really be good if they would come in and make the changes. That way, when one good storm comes through, it doesn't wash whatever work you guys are putting in additionally.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm afraid, afraid of, though, when we put that money in and then.
Yeah, um, just to clarify, you know, the President Chief, we do, uh, do work on the other side of there, the, the Brusson side, and we were started that, we're gonna start that work here in April, where we raise our other funds to do work and we've been raising over a hundred thousand dollars to do work on that road to maintain access, um.
The valley pulling in down?
Yeah, um, you know, and we've cleared the gutter, you know, cleared ditches, we've cleared gutter, you know, cleared ditches, we've cleared, placed culverts, um, done work on the, within partnership with the West Virginia Land Trust, which now owns that property and is public, public land. Um, it's heavily, it's heavily used. Yeah, Mason Town is certainly the, you know, the argument is that the rescue and emergency services come from Mason Town.
To consider it.
Yes.
And, and we will.
And I, I understand your concern with the fire departments and the EMS.
Certainly, yeah, I understand.
And we share those concerns, honestly, I, I appreciate it, just want to ease your access to that, like.
Certainly, um, that's just what is, we are, you know, we are continuing to do that work, it will happen this year, so.
Don't get us wrong, we greatly appreciate what you guys do.
Okay.
Especially with the Chief River.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have you guys filled your position yet?
No, we're still looking for a bookkeeper. If anyone wants to, a part-time job, we will.
Oh, Kathy, give them a plug in the paper.
It's been out there.
I'm just Derek, it's all part of. I'm just Derek, it's all part of.
I thought he was gonna encourage a church.
I lied, well, you have to see my check.
That's why I thought he was. All right, okay, we will go ahead and, and move along. Next up, uh, is the wrestling barn.
Yes, uh, you will see in your packets that last week, uh, it was requested that, uh, we received three estimates, three bids for demolition work, remove the wrestling barn.
Can I, can I speak on this? So, um, we donated the land last week, we did tour with.
Remove the wrestling barn.
Can I, can I speak on this? So, um, we donated the land last week, we did tour with that, one point zero eight acres. And then originally, they were asking for a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution to build a new wrestling barn. Um, once you give twenty-five thousand out to one building project, you have to, you know, there's so many great projects in the county. Wrestling barn is something, if they were to leave, we would be liable for and it would probably get.
We own that.
Because honestly, it's rough. It's rough, rough, rough. This is a liability that we would have to take on no matter what. So I'm fine with county commission moving forward, um, funding the demolition and I think, um, think, um, with them getting bids for the demolition, their bids are gonna be way cheaper than what the, um, county would ever get. So honestly, I think we're saving money in the long run is where I'm getting asked. So, um, we had three bids, um, one from, um, one from Jennings Excavating, thirty thousand, one from Three D Drilling, thirty-one-five, and the third one from Get Concrete O C, thirty-four-five. Um, so I guess if I, if I could, um, I would like to make a motion that we fund the demolition of, um, the county, um, wrestling barn up at the high school not to exceed the lowest bid of thirty thousand dollars and that contribution will come from.
From your five-sixty.
From the contributions fund.
I will second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to fund the demolition of, uh, the county-owned, um, facility located up on the.
County property.
Uh, dubbed as. Not to exceed the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Commissioner, any other discussion on that before we?
Um, no, I, I just.
It's legitimate, I'm saying that if they were building, they'd be building, we'd have to tear it down.
I think we're moving, yeah, I think we're moving in the right, yeah, I think we're moving in the right direction and we can't give that contribution, but that definitely, that's something that we can't give that contribution, but that definitely, that's something we have to do either way.
Responsibility.
And I'm, I'm gonna say if we bitted that out as a county, it would come back at forty or fifty, now that goes, so.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Joe, will you please reach out to them immediately, you know?
Yes.
And get everything wrapped up on that. All right, next up, we have some new business, uh, for consideration, uh, with an application to use the courthouse lawn for the National Day of Prayer.
This time I make a motion that we approve this application, reduce the courthouse lawn on May fourth.
Um, for the, again. My apologies. I would like to second that motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the use of the courthouse lawn for the National Day of Prayer, um, on May fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Twenty-three. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
We don't have anything from Joe over yet?
No.
Okay. On to you, Jeff.
But in this evidence, I will say that we certainly have two groups to be worked on simultaneously.
As I'll have a sheriff's.